Seven o'clock, call the meeting to order. Roll call and declaration of form.
Dr. Matusek.
Here.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Chip.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Present.
Mr. Tillman.
There.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. Thank you for coming to our meeting. Agenda item two, public comments. I don't know if anyone signed the speaker list. And then I don't believe anyone contacted superintendent.
I'm sorry.
Or I. No one's on the speaker. Okay, thank you. Very good. Agenda item three, consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to pull out of the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve this consent agenda. Second.
Dr. Matusek.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Chip.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Hi.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Agenda item four, regular business, 4.1, discussion with Chisholm Trail Technology Center regarding partnership opportunities.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Thomas and I'm assistant superintendent at Chisholm Trail Technology Center. I just want to introduce a few employees that will be speaking with you tonight as well as a couple of guests. And also placed in front of you a packet of information for our district for you to look through as you have time. And then also placed over here, an example of some of the work our digital technology program has begun to do this year with the Hennessy School District. So Rhonda Simpson will come up as our program director at Chisholm Trail and go over some statistics with you. Candace Myers will follow that. Tiffany Barnett, our health careers instructor, will speak to you a little bit about her program and relationship here in Hennessy. And a former student Evelyn has joined us as well. Then our welding instructor, Bill Taylor, and Molly with Energy Meter Solutions. We'll talk a little bit about their relationship that's been built throughout this year. And then Max Thomas, superintendent at Chisholm Trail, will close on time. Thank you.
First of all, I want to take this opportunity to just tell you how much we've enjoyed having Hennessy students on our campus the last two and a half years. You have some great students. They're very polite and they're some of the best students that we've had come through our programs. If you look at the paperwork that I'm sending out to you, it shows you in the last two and a half years, the number of students from Hennessy that we've had in our programs. You can see overall, 117 students have come through. It started in the spring of 19. They started out with us in January of 19. We had 24 enrolled. In FY '20, we had 50 enrolled and '21, 34 enrolled. And this year, we only have nine enrolled. But I want to explain a little bit of that to you. I think the last two years have been really difficult with COVID and the things that have gone on in the school systems overall. Plus, we had some transportation issues. We didn't know till after school started that we weren't going to run an afternoon bus from Hennessy to bring students out. So we had to accommodate all those students in the afternoon and put those in our morning. We accommodated all of them, but some of the Hennessy students couldn't get that worked out in order to come out in the morning to be with us. We had some move, some that had to get credit recovery due to COVID and other reasons. Maybe they went epic last year and just didn't get all the hours that they needed in order to continue or to be able to graduate with their class. And then again, our transportation issue. During our two and a half years, we've also had 74 receive certification, that's skill certifications. Those certifications may have come from welding. You can see that in the last two years, the number of welding certifications that we've had. We also had some in health careers. That's long-term care where they can go out and work in long-term care facilities. That's dementia. That's CPR. And yes, I know that all of your seniors get CPR, but the ones that come on our campus also get CPR. In automotive, last year, our automotive program became ASE accredited and the testing changed. But you can see that we've also had certifications in automotive. And last year, we had four in automotive, and that's engine repair and engine performance. And then we also had students that completed certifications through our digital technologies program. And that's any of your Microsoft Office programs that they run, software programs, your Adobe programs. That could be Photoshop, InDesign, Illustrator. And then also, we run medical office, medical billing, and HIPAA that they can get certified in where they can go to work at a medical office. So with all that in mind, we also get academic credit. We pull out to get math and science and a computer credit when they come onto our campus. And not only do we offer that, but we also offer a life skill, learning to live out in the world and to be productive when they get out there. And so we also touch on work ethics, which in today's world is interesting. We also do communication, time management, and problem solving and accountability. The other part that you see on the paperwork that I handed out to you, you can tell the different certifications that we had. And please remember that in FY '20, we were only there for three nine weeks because everybody shut down, the whole, it seems like the whole world shut down. And we didn't offer the last, we were online, but it was all new to us trying to offer that, that last nine weeks of FY '20. So you can see the certifications that were achieved there. And then FY '21, the number increases. And FY '21 was really the only full year of instruction that we've had with your students. Also, another thing that you might want to take in in mind is this, in FY '21, we did not lose one day of instruction for COVID. We went every day where other school systems had an alternative schedule. They may have ran an A V schedule, or they might have gone Monday, Tuesday, and off Wednesday, but we were there in class every day. Then if you look at the bottom bullets on that paperwork that I handed out, we don't have an intensive pre-screening application process, which means that we pretty much take any of the high school students that have applied to get into our programs. It's 100% acceptance rate. We also do full accommodations for student learning needs. Chisholm Trail will provide the transportation for students coming from Hennessy, morning and afternoon. We were fully committed to building a satellite campus in Hennessy, and that would be programs that would be well-suited for Hennessy students. We've already begun building local industry relationships through our instructors and our biz program. We have one of our biz, which is business and industry here, that have been working in the Hennessy community. And also, Chisholm Trail will not float a bond issue that would take potential dollars from your school district. We save money. If there's a necessity to build, then we've saved that money where we could build what needs to be done for the betterment of students. Thank you.
One thing I forgot to mention as Ms. Myers comes up, we also have an instructor here from every one of our programs. So at the conclusion, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. We have a couple of business and industry employees that have also joined us this evening. But I think it speaks well of our district that we have, I think, 22 out of 32 employees took the time out of their schedule tonight to be with you to help me answer any additional questions that you may have.
Hi, I'm Candace Myers and I'm the Student Services Coordinator at Chisholm Trail Technology Center. And I want to piggyback off just a bit the numbers under academic credit that Rhonda talked about, the math and science and the computer. I think there's a total of 33, but that does not reflect those students who are on the core path. You know, high school students can choose, their parents can sign off on either putting them on the core path or college prep. If they're on the core path, they have an opportunity to use a year of Career Tech. And that's as per Senate Bill 1370, which was passed in 2018 by the Oklahoma Senate. Core students that are completing a year of Career Tech actually can fulfill one of two math credits above Algebra I. So I know for a fact that several Hennessy students who are on the core path, they've been able to transcript their third math because they did a year at Career Tech. None of those students were sad that they didn't have to take Algebra II. I can assure you of that. So Jill Murray would probably be the person, because she transcripts it. We don't know who those students are. And they give them the math credit here for that, for those that are going to go directly into the workforce. One other legislative thing I want to bring up, in 2016, the Oklahoma House passed House Bill 3218. And that was where students that were completing a year of Career Tech can count for one point on your post-secondary opportunities on your A through F report card, which is helpful because, you know, those students who are on the core path, who are going to go into the workforce, are not going to take an AP class probably. They're not taking concurrent enrollment, which are two of the things you get points for on your post-secondary opportunities. So that gives the core kids an opportunity to add to that section of your A through F report card by adding a point. A couple of things I want to point out to data points. There was six or seven years ago, there was a health and retirement study that was done by a public resource. And they came up with what they called the mama rule. I think I talked about it when Rhonda and I came up the first time. And the data that they gathered, that they came up with the fact that 70% of the average American lives within 18 minutes of their mom or their home or where they were raised. 20% live within two hours, and then that last 10% live further away. So people tend to migrate back towards, you know, where they're from often, or they stay where they're from or near their family where they were raised. The latest U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics show that 60, as of 2020, and it's actually down in 2020 from 2019, 2020, 63% of high school seniors that graduate go onto post-secondary education. Just 63%, down from 68% the year before. So 30, that leaves 37% of the graduating class to stay and enter the workforce. 27% of those that go on to post-secondary actually come back before they finish their degree. So that leaves quite a few individuals in your community, you know, in the workforce or ready to go to work. So I think we can all agree that the product of a school system directly impacts the future of your community. So giving these students an opportunity, those that aren't going on to post-secondary education, giving them an opportunity to graduate from high school with a skill or a trade, to become more successful, productive citizens within your community is a great thing. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tiffany Barnett and this is Evelyn Ramirez. I'd just like to take a moment to follow up with Candace and with Rhonda as well, just to say how much we enjoy our Hennessy students. Give yourself a big pat because they represent the sound of Hennessy very well. I am one of three of the healthcare instructors, and we, again, have a teaching ratio of about one to seven students approximately. We have innovative technology to aid in educating. I love our virtual reality. It's something that we've been blessed with this past year with a technology grant and have 10 virtual reality stations. So it's basically putting away the textbook, read over what the textbook says, but then jumping inside of this 360 headset, and you're actually inside the heart and inside of disease and disorders that are happening. So it's a super cool way for us to train the students in medical terminology and anatomy. We have anatomy and clay, hands-on labs, and real-life simulations as well for our clinicals. We have opportunities for high school juniors and seniors to complete their CNA their first year. So meaning as a junior, they're going to come in and receive that CNA and be able to work during the summer and their senior year. We've had some great success over some students this past summer. Someone was making $17 an hour as a junior, senior, making $17 an hour. So average is anywhere between 13 and 17, but 17 was a pretty big number once he came in and told us this year. And we do do certifications in CNA, long-term care, also basic medical assistance, home health evening. And the CPR, what students are getting in the high schools are like the 30-minute CPR. They don't actually get the certification. So what we teach as well is the Certification for American Heart Association, basic life support. It's what your hospitals or your facilities are going to want them to have. It's a four-hour course and they get their card from that. We also have the phlebotomy training and dementia training as well. We do have a contract with Hennessy Nursing Home for us to be able to do clinicals. COVID has halted just for a second while it's in the midst of higher numbers, but we're looking forward to get back in as soon as those go down. So currently, we're doing our simulations in-house, or we can also go into another nursing home in Kingfisher to be able to complete this. But we do have a contract with Hennessy and are very excited to have our students be able to do those clinicals in their hometown. Training in the community will help get their foot in the door and be able to get hired once that certification is over. So on your paper, I think it was 15 Hennessy students that we've had certification. Out of those 15, we have seven who have either worked at Hennessy Nursing Home or currently still working there. And again, such a great opportunity for them to give back to the community. Again, this is Evelyn Ramirez, and she's been through our program as a high school student, junior, senior, and received her certification. She's working at Hennessy Nursing Home and now at SNU on the path to being the next RN, taking care of you guys. So I'm going to give it to Evelyn for just a minute to tell how our career track has prepared her.
I'm sending good thanks to Ms. Barnett, Ms. Wazell, and Ms. Estep for giving me the time and instructing me in my junior, senior year at the high school, but also CTTC because even though I don't, I didn't study with the many instructors, I still had bonded with some instructors. And Ms. Myers and with Ms. Simpson. And as a senior, as of 2020 graduate, of 2021 graduate, this year, I'm in SNU, going to become an RN. It's four years, but something that I really appreciated is that during my senior year, I got to finish my CNA. And during the summer, I got my certification to work as a CNA. And I'm currently working at the Hennessy Nursing Home, greatly people working there. I did get scholarships, but I didn't get to finish paying off, but with what I earned during my summer as a CNA, I got to pay off. And I'm really grateful because with that certification, my parents and as a first-generation student, I could pay off my college for my first year. And it was really great. CTTC has not only given me the opportunity as a CNA, but has led me to the pathway. Ms. Amy Estep, all last year, she gave us opportunities to look forward to job shadowing. I got to job shadow as an OBGYN for labor and delivery, and that's the career path where I want to take. And that opportunity that CTTC gave me led me to what I want to focus on my career. They really teach you to become an adult. They gave you, you have to be independent. You take your career, you take your task to finish off as a CNA. High school could do that, but they, the instructors really do give you individually and specifically treat you as a student, but also become as an adult for as if you work in the welding program, or if you're working as a CNA, or if you're going to go back in your career as a nursing school. It helped me a whole lot. School is different from high school. College is different from high school, but CTTC helped me with that. I do want to also mention that they treat you as individual students. They're not going to, oh, these are the Hennessy students, these are Kim Fisher, these are Dober's, these are Watanga. They treat you as individually, and they put your attention to each one of you. And I'm grateful for what they did. They gave me something to rely on, something to go farther and study into my career path, and I'm really grateful for each one of them. Even Ms. Myers and Ms. Simpson also pushing me there and telling me to go farther and study. And throughout going to, same time, going to Hennessy High School in the afternoon and CTTC in the morning, I still had focused time, time focus to, for my studies here, but also studies over there. And it was a great opportunity, and I'm really hopeful that all students in Hennessy can have the opportunity as well as I did. And as a first generation, maybe that's their last step, going to Chisholm Trail. But they have the opportunity to take something, not instead of just working, to making their parents proud. I'm sure my parents are really proud of what the, maybe it was a summer job, but I'm still currently working. And I'm glad that my parents at this moment don't have to be paying any of my studies, and I have the opportunity to become an adult and have that opportunity. And thank you.
Wow.
Well, hey, following that deal, she's pretty impressive, isn't she? I really wish I'd have gone first now. But anyway, to piggyback off what she just got through saying, I've been out there, it's been my second year out there. My background is administration and then, and I've gotten into oil and gas the last 12 years. But what I have noticed since I've gotten out there is just what she said. They treat you like individuals. It's not a cookie cutter situation. I call it big kid school. When they come out there, we talk about things. They have got my phone number. If they're going to be late, they text me. They don't text my partner, David Wilson. They don't take, they call the school. Mama doesn't call the school. They text me, they're going to be late. So they're on a four-man crew, and one guy doesn't show up for 30 minutes. Boss is paying him, paying those three people while they're waiting on the other person to show up. So they, they get points taken off, they don't let me know what's going on. Like I said, I call it big kid school out there. Last year, we had, every one of our students had received one form of certification. There was 24 of those. Every one of them passed the 3G test, and then 17 of those 24 went on to complete the 4G, 6G, and so forth. I would like to introduce Molly Ral with Energy Meter Systems, some things we worked on last year and then over the summer. One of our former students is working for her, and I'll let her speak on his behalf, if you will.
Yeah, I'm glad to be hooked up with Bill. I was, well, before COVID and stuff like that, I've been on committee with the CTTC. The last instructor worked with me, and we worked with materials and stuff like that, giving their welding program whatever we can to help them out. We'd like to work on a program to where we can, basically, it's not the medical field, obviously, but doing some job shadowing, doing some summer work, actual working for us. Like he said, one of his former students is now working full-time for me. He's a 19-year-old, just had a baby and is working his way up to over $20 an hour. So, I mean, it's just a pure product right there, right straight out of CTTC, it's going straight to work, to the workforce. So they have a great program. They have a wonderful facility. They've got everything at their fingertips over there. And if we can work through them to keep our kids local, number one. Not very many people know what we do out there. We've been in business for 36 years, and it's for a reason. We're there to stay, and there's not much going to leave the natural gas area. So, but we're happy to work with them and hopefully continue.
Absolutely. That's something I've worked with her on already, is some work-based learning stuff. Some of those students that come out there, once they achieve a certain skill set, and my partner and I, we've talked about this. They've got to have a certain skill set, they've got to have work ethic, they also ought to be respectful before they go out. And the beauty of that, if I send her somebody, let's say second semester, even next year, Molly called me and said, nah, he's really not working out. I can really write back in, sit him back down and say, hey, this is what we need to improve on. If it's skill set, if it's attitude or work ethic, and that's what I've got a kid right now that's wanting to go out and be a part of, not necessarily her program, but someone else's. And I told him, I said, I said, your skill set's there, absolutely, but I said, your work ethic's not there. You want to go take a little longer break and this and that, the respect issue. Again, he's wanting to get out, so we've changed that attitude already. And again, we treat them like big kids. They're supposed to be getting ready for the workforce. Not everybody's college-bound, but just even if you are college-bound, you can still go through a program and you quote-unquote, we can fall back on this. Someone may want to hobby during their weekends, if you will, but if nothing else, they're going to leave there with a skill set. And I call it a prepaid Visa card. When they get their certification, whether it be in structural, pipe, or whatever it is, and they choose not to go that path, that's fine. They still got, in two years, five years, six years down the road, they've got a prepaid Visa card sitting in their wallet that says, hey, I can go do this. So if things don't work out, long story short, bringing them back to community, the main thing, making productive citizens, and that's what we shoot for. So, thank you very much, Molly, for coming up.
Board, administration, I appreciate the opportunity that we have to share with you. I would like to just go over a little bit of the timeline over the last three years. I didn't communicate directly with you. I talked directly with Dr. Woods. I did meet with two of you prior to the relationship that we established. Ms. Simpson and Ms. Myers came up for the presentation tonight that you had Autry here. And at the end of that meeting, I happened to be between Louisville and Lexington, Kentucky. And I get a phone call from Dr. Woods and said, Ms. Thomas, I got to ask you a question. If you had a million dollars, how would you spend it? What would you do? And I said, I'd have a satellite campus at Hennessy. He said, great answer. Well, I wasn't giving him a great answer as much as it fit, because I have Dover students, which I'm also over that school district, that can come up here and be a part of this program. Okay, they're not a part of the technology center. That would give them an opportunity to come over and be a part of some programs here, along with going to Chisholm Trail. And so we started that three years ago. This semester, we completing that. And so we had a relationship, and now we're back going through the same thing. And my question is, is have we not done what we've asked to do? And, you know, is the commitment still good? And so my staff came here today. We not only just work with high school students, we actually get tremendously involved in your community. If you were to talk to Watanga, Kingfisher, Dover, we help them in many ways. We give over 1,000 hours of community service back to our communities. We actually are involved. And your patrons will see us quite often, working concession stands, ballgames, track meets, food drives, meals on wheels, whatever what you all need, that you need help. Because it's getting tougher and tougher to get volunteers to do anything. I know at Kingfisher, I don't think they could have run a cross-country meet or a track meet without 24 of our staff working that meet. And so we know the challenges, but we are part of that culture. We want to make sure that we meet your needs in many different ways, not only in business and industry, but also meet the needs of our students. And so the staff came tonight to show you that, hey, we're all in, and we're not going anywhere, but hopefully working here, you know. And so just to give you a little idea, when Dr. Woods visited with me about this and we agreed to this relationship, the vote was supposed to take place in January, so he calls me one day and says, hey, the oil and gas is tanked. Can we move that and go one more year? I said, absolutely. I fully understand. And one of the main reasons of having students come out for three years, which will be two, is it builds, the parents understand what we do and how important it is that kids are getting certifications. And I've learned this as a parent, of two students that graduated from Kingfisher schools, unless your parents have a business, most high school students without a skill are unemployable. Get a skill in their hand. We have a pre-engineering instructor here. We have National American Semifinalists, valedictorians that go through this program. They go on to OU, to engineering school. They do quite well. In their second year, they come back and say, this is the first time I've got new material at OU in their engineering program, is in my second year of college, when the others are being, you know, flunked out. So it's a testament to not only the standard that we have, that we meet all needs from the engineering all the way through all our skills and trades, all the way to woodworking. And kids that have limited abilities, they learn a craft, you know, that they can make materials off of that. So anyway, I would like the board to know that, you know, we have committed for this investment. Hopefully, this relationship will continue. If you guys choose to go with Autry, your kids are going to finish this year, okay? We're not stopping down at Christmas if you guys say we'd rather go with Autry. That's a decision you guys have made. We've had 117 Hennessy students go through Chisholm Trail, okay? That's 234,000 that you have invested in those students going versus 3 million that you would have paid over three years, okay? So you're saying, what's the difference? Well, Dover, Kingfisher, Watanga, and Lomegas put into rest of the field. We spend over $8,000 per student. You say, how do you spend that much money on students, you know? Well, I can tell you, the equipment we use are the best equipment that you can buy. What they go into the workforce is what they're going to see. I know there's a scanner printer that we use in our digital technology that makes things like this right here. $6,000, just one piece of equipment. And Molly's talked about the equipment we have in our welding. It's the best equipment, our health careers. And so we're a small school, but we invest in the lives of kids, and we support the community in many ways. And I hope that you guys would consider and reconsider, you know, the commitment that we made before. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
What does a satellite campus look like to you?
Dr. Woods, this is conversation we had. He had a building that was going to be vacated, and we were going to renovate that building. And then we would, they would, you know, Hennessy within pool would say, okay, let's do a survey. What is the greatest need that we have that's not? What is the greatest need that we have that's not necessarily duplicated from what we do at Chisholm Trail? But it can be. So let's say it's, you have welding in your high school. Those are career tech programs. Your FFA program, that's a career tech program. Health Consumer Science, those are career tech programs, no different than what we do out there. We just suddenly do all career tech programs. But it's really what the need would be. So we would renovate a facility, hire the staff, put them in it and run it just like a, it was many, in fact, many career techs have satellite campuses.
Sure.
Okay, so it would be Chisholm Trail at Hennessy.
Would it be possible for, and I don't, I mean, maybe equipment and whatever, but let's just say like the nurse program, they had a room set up in a building that was mainly set up for something else? Like, could you have places where those kids wouldn't have to necessarily go all the way over there? Where they could, is that kind of how it could go?
If it be space, equipment, staff, you know, you would look at the dynamics, but also more important, the finances of that, you know? So what we've done is no other school would do what we've done. Nobody's ever brought that to your table. We're going to invest dollars that's being paid by taxpayers in this community. Windmills go pick up the biggest, you know? At Dover, it was oil and gas companies and windmills, gas plants put into bill. It was $8 million when they joined Technology Centers, 104 million right now.
So if you're talking on a satellite program here at Hennessy, are you talking an extension to the programs you already have at Chisholm Trail?
It could be duplicated or an extension.
Duplicated or an extension, or is there a possibility of adding a program?
Absolutely. It would be great if it was two different programs that we don't even offer. You know, larger districts, Francis Tuttel, my son was at Francis Tuttel and Autry. Okay, he's been at both of those school districts. The more schools you got, the more smorgasbord you have. But if you have X amount of students that you can capture and you add more programs, all you're doing is thinning out. Instead of having 20 kids or 15, now you've got four kids per program. And so you've got to keep that balance. So that's why you see Francis Tuttel, they offer all these programs. Well, Hennessy, a lot of kids have come in. Well, when you're in rural America, you're going to get so many because if they're a band and FFA and football or basketball, then their schedule's not going to allow them to come to Chisholm Trail.
And I think the other thing that's important, and I don't know exactly how it works and maybe you can talk to this, but your school, I know when our students show up, doesn't matter, they're getting in. That's not, they're going to, you're going to accommodate them.
That's correct.
That's not always the case.
That's correct. I have, Kim Hallmark is my counselor at Dover and Ms. Yilp, okay? Was at Hennessy also. And one of the things that we found out, and my son knows this, that some schools, you've got to have a certain A C T before they let you in. Okay, Kim was telling me that, well, almost, you know, would like to see something different. They're going to get very many kids in some programs. So, you know, career techs don't necessarily compete. We're not like, you're in the same class at football and you're competing. That's the beauty about career tech. And I was in public school for 26 years, this is my 14th year of career tech. There's no competition. We are partners. We share resources. We send people. We allow students, if we don't have a program that we offer students, then we have a cooperative agreement that that student can go to their program. Okay, so let's say, or Chisholm, or Canadian Valley, or Francis Tuttel, or Autry. So if you decide to choose a Chisholm Trail and then you have a student that wants into doing hygiene, okay, then they can get into Autry, doing hygiene through Chisholm Trail because of that cooperative agreement. It doesn't cost anybody to do that.
What are some of the programs that Chisholm Trail's identified that you would like to add, but you don't have facilities to do so, that you've seen a need in the communities of Watanga, Kingfisher, Dover?
We've changed those, Mr. Griffin, we've changed those programs up. We've added several programs since we've been at, since I've been at Chisholm Trail to meet the needs. If it doesn't, we slide it out for something else. You know, we've added cosmetology, grooming program. Everybody's going to get a haircut sometime, someplace. Maybe not everybody, neither.
Delete that part, Jay.
Can you take that out? You know, we have that discussion always. We have money saved, okay? So we have, our carryover is like 6.2 million. We save our money to build facilities, okay? That's needed. And so we just don't build facilities unless there's a huge need that we can, we can make sure that we can staff and we can get the student population, pop population in there.
So if we decide to do something, you're, I mean, if we can get in and things line up.
We like to do things on a dime.
You've got the money to do it.
We got to do that. That's what, we like to do it on a dime. We, career tech is noted for that. If there's a needed airspace, career tech will meet that need through the state.
For us to advance with the opportunity of the satellite campus that would obviously be down the road, you know, perhaps a commitment, but first that would need to take place would be for us to go in district, correct?
Yes.
With Chisholm Trail. We need to have that as a community election before we.
That was the agreement that we had and the vote was supposed to take place in January and we've extended it another year. So what will take place, you will work directly with the State Department of Career Tech. They're going to ask you, have you done a survey in the community? What have you done to help promote? We've been able to help allow students and families that know what we do that's going to give you the support. Okay, but we can't, we can't go out and root. They will not allow us to do flyers or advertise in the newspaper or anything like that. It's all got to come within your community.
I'd like to ask a question on the cooperative agreement you were talking about, like whether, say, Autrotech or any other technology centers. If we have a student that you don't offer what they want and they're interested in something, say in Autrotech or nearby, what kind of priority do they get? You said they can get that program, but what kind of priority do they get? Is there a guarantee that they get into that program, like they get into?
I don't want to be on the negative side, probably the same priority you're going to get if you even choose another district besides Chisholm Trail. Sometimes it's very difficult. Any questions for any of my staff? It looks like I put them asleep now. Evelyn did quite well. She had my attention the whole time, but.
You mentioned a couple of years ago when we first visited with you, that you did have a cybersecurity program. Still, is that in place?
In fact, we have one of the best. Jason Oden right here.
Speaking of that, because I think when I was really encouraged at that a couple of years ago, when you were speaking of the certification of the students that coming out of the two year program were getting very good paying jobs immediately, that some kids happen to go to four year liberal arts universities to get the same certification, but you're doing it half the time.
Yeah, Francis Tuttel's trying to hire him twice. Okay, because they've come out and toured our programs and they're so influential, our faculty, they try to hire him to get him there. Okay, I said, you can't have him, he's a local pastor, this is home, he's not going anywhere. So.
So, yeah, we trained towards computers and computer networking, which involves a lot of security aspects and cybersecurity. But we have tremendous success with those students who get those certifications. We've had many students go out to Pioneer Telephone or Bank First in Kingfisher or public schools. And like I've said, several students out making about $16 an hour and then within three years, they're making as much as $25 an hour with the certifications they have in hand. And so there's really tremendous opportunity. And what's great about the IT world is you can enter in at that entry level and there's always opportunity for advancement very quickly, you know, as time goes by. So it's a fantastic opportunity. I'm always wishing more students would take advantage of, so.
How many students you have in your program now?
Right now, I've got like 23.
We had, one year we had, and Mr. Freeland was our IT, now he's our IT for our campus. But also with Dover, I do a lot of sharing, okay? So Glenda Payne is also my treasurer, okay? Mr. Freeland does my IT. My custodial team will come in and do the, help do the floors for me. And so I wish all our schools that had a need would call us. Just like one year, we had Simran Lectry, their computers crashed. Griffin, this is a great example. They called, Mr. Freeland, he's able to capture all that personal data that they needed that they could never find. Hours, social security, everybody that's employed in this. And he was able to pull that out of that machine. How do they do it? It's a, it's a, yeah, yeah. Look who knows what I'm talking about. But anyway, and they were so grateful, you know? But we, we understand, and that's one of the things coming from public schools and I, and I write that check for my avalorum every year and I see how much I send to the technology center. So anybody that calls and has a need or elderly persons, like a computer's not working, I send Nathan to their house, fix a computer, fix a printer. We don't charge anything because, you know, that come December, they're writing a check. I want them to know their value in what we do. And so that's very important, that people see the true value in what we provide at Chisholm Trail Technology Center. That's why we're so engaged in the community. Any other questions? I know we've taken a lot of your time and you've all been very gracious, very attentive to our staff tonight and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
You guys want to stay?
Would you like?
We'll give you a few minutes. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to go.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Don't forget to put in for mileage and overtime. I was looking at him about the haircut.
Yeah, I don't get haircuts. How is it still on?
Hey, guys. I'm finding my spot.
Item two.
Agenda item 4.2, discussion and possible board action regarding an out of state trip for the FFA to attend the national convention.
So Mr. Woods argued the itinerary based that they plan on leaving. So congratulations to him, all the kids qualified. And so I'm glad to recommend that to the board to approve that.
Any discussion?
I would only recommend he stays someplace other than Lebanon, Missouri. He can do better than that. I travel that road a lot.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
East St. Louis?
Sure, yeah, just keep on going.
Do we have a motion?
They have to approve.
Dr. Matusik.
Yes.
Mr. LaF.
Hi.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Night.
Mr. Tilden.
Yes.
Agenda item 4.3, discussion and possible board action to award contract for the repair replacement of the existing track.
So obviously from the time I've come in, this has been a, you know, conversation piece and been a lot of research, a lot of visits. And, you know, first, Helles and Bane, or two that have set the national standard. I mean, they bring the crop when it comes to the track companies. And so Mr. David Fisher with Helles could not be here tonight. He had a pre-bid meeting in Canyon, Texas. He did not get out until 4:15. He's available by phone if there's anything in the quote that you have a question on specific to his. And as they go through, I can point out some of the little differences and then I have Dennis Reagan, Regan?
Reagan.
Reagan with Bane here tonight. If you'd like to ask him any questions about his quote and, you know, of what it is. He may have some samples for you. The one that I would recommend to the board, and I've visited with Dr. Matusik about this, are we ready to award it? I don't know if you guys are ready to award it tonight, but there's nothing more really to be done at this point in time as far as getting quotes from the top people having out here doing the swiss test. There's really nothing more on our end. If you're not comfortable with it, you know, that's a decision you guys can make tonight. We will just need time to think about it or further questions come up. But Dennis, I'm just going to turn it over to you. And then at some point in time, I am going to kind of, anything that may be a little different in the quote, I'll make sure the board knows just because of the history of this and the 12 years and what have you. And that some of them dealt with it longer than I have.
Okay, I appreciate it. My name is Dennis Reagan. As Jason said, I'm with Bynon Sports Services based in Wichita and cover a four state region. First question some of you may have is why are we here? Why are we talking about the track being it's only 11 or 12 years old? And Jason had the foresight when he was hired as superintendent to do what's called a geotech report. Give the analogy of a geotech being like an MRI. If you have an orthopedic issue, tells us what's below the track surface. And not only that, it also tells us maybe what's not below the track surface. In this case, I found, I'll keep this moving, you guys, so we'll be calling, seeing your time, I understand. There was something that was very significant that was missing. One is a profile beneath it of six inches of aggregate rock. And let me explain. Track surfaces are primarily polyurethane these days. They're half an inch. Below that, you have four inches of asphalt. Under the asphalt, you have six inches of rock. Underneath that, you may have a stabilized subbase. Depending on the region of the country you're in, there's a number of factors. What the track at Hennessy is missing is the aggregate rock. If any of you, I don't know if any of you are community walkers, if you go out there anymore, probably the extent is a football game like tonight. But terrors are very violent. You guys have been in the industry 18 years, worked in turf and track. Almost looks like something I haven't seen, very violent. And I don't mean to be facetious or make light of it. It's concerning. And usually terrors like that are coming from your subbase, what's below. So in this case, initially, I had the opportunity of working with the previous superintendent, left samples, that's how Jason knew to get ahold of me. And at that time, looked at it, I hadn't seen anything quite like it, the terrors again. Usually in track surfaces, because they don't, they're not a weight bearing load, they're very, very minor. In this case, they're not. If any of you were to go out there. Two things that are missing, and the partner that I have that does the civil work, he had a conflict as well. He's in Indianapolis tonight. But we both looked at it separately, put together a proposal. And again, I want to go back to the first question I asked, why are we here? After a track facility that's 11 or 12 years old that was generously donated by a member of the community? You're missing rock, you guys, underneath that, but also the subbase needs to be stabilized. You do that with fly ash. Sadly, in this case, everything would need to come out and we would need to start over. That involves new asphalt, new rock, a new, obviously a new track surface and a stabilized subbase.
So how deep will the subbase be? I mean, how much will we talk about improving?
The asphalt's four inches, the rock's six inches, that's 10 inches, and the stabilization's eight inches. So we're going down quite a bit. And we're going back to the geotech report. That's our MRI. And what it said numerous times is the word clay. What do we know about clay? It's expansive. Your soils have expanded. The base failed on us. The base fails, the surface fails. Why? The strength of the tenth of the surface basically does not withstand unacceptable passes around. Guys, when there's tracking below it, what happens is the surface mirrors what's going on on top of it. And in this case, again, any of you, if you haven't gone out there, I'd really recommend you go by and just see it. A lot of times people look at tracks from their cars or trucks and go, hey, it's eight lanes, 400 meters. It's good, we're good. And that, in this case, because it's in your community, I would recommend looking at it. I just want to keep this moving. So I looked at the profile, we looked at the geotech, the partner that I had for Precision, which we've done tracks in the state of Oklahoma, he gave a recommendation. I did as well. We came together, put in a proposal. And one of the things I want to let you know, I know this is an opportunity to sell, but we're familiar with soils in Oklahoma. Bynon has done tracks recently at Cassin, Cherokee, Ardmore, Katusa, state track meets are held. In addition, ORU, OU, University of Tulsa, Oklahoma State. Anybody else have missed Tulsa Public Schools? So Paul Pike, go on and on, Broken Arrow. We have no soils in the state of Oklahoma. Whoever put that track in, I don't know. The surface company probably just followed what was below, but there was an important element that was missing, you guys. It's that rock and stabilizing the subbase. Our proposal has both those in there. In addition, we priced out two track surfaces as well. We stand behind it. We've got a great solution for you moving forward to get this nice facility back. And in a base ad, I walked through the gymnasium and I had, walked through the locker room on the way in. I saw the kind of caliber of facilities that you stand for here at Hennessy. on the way in, I saw the kind of caliber of facilities that you stand for here at Hennessy. My goal and Bynon's goal is to get this track facility back in line with that Hennessy standard that's way, way up here. One last thing, and then any questions that you have, again, I'll keep it moving. We could do, if selected, I want to get the cart ahead of the horse, we always, we have a competitor here. Our partner could do the subbase work. It would take approximately two months. They could do that over the winter months, but they could start it in November, December. The track surface is polyurethane. We need 50 degrees in rising basically to install that. So it would be March before we can install the polyurethane track surface. The point is it would be ready for late spring for some of your seniors. And last comment is, you know, you talk about basically the gold standard. Bynon this year, we had the university award and the Olympic trials were held to select our Olympic team. It's not just high caliber, the Stanfords and the world, the majority of them. I put together a packet on some of the collegiate world records that were set on our tracks nationwide. But I also have a list in here of the ones in the state of Oklahoma. And again, we'll offer a very, very good solution to you for the school district. And any questions at all that anybody has on the track or?
You said until the temperature rises 50 degrees and rising. Once you're able to start putting that down, what's the timeline?
Sure.
And we know weather and stuff.
Approximately 21 days and what that would entail, again, depending on which one is selected, prepping it at first, there's always going to be some prep work and then apply a primer and you're getting into the actual surface. There's some days where the weather might not allow in March, if we're in a March or April, if it's a rainy day, for instance, 17 to 21 days. And then at the last thing, we come back and stripe the track. That takes about two days to stripe it. So overall, you're looking at that 21-day period. But again, a good six weeks to do the base, and that can be done in November and December.
Right. I saw that, you know, as part of your bid, site work and whatnot, is basically scrapping everything that we have, including the shot put rings, tow boards, all the pit areas. I mean, there is nothing salvageable of our existing track?
There is. This is real important. Not, and I want to explain something. The inside and outside curves are made of concrete. Very important, that's staying. That's a big expense. We also need to check, this conversation with Jason today, to make sure the track's 400 meters. That's a formality, you know. Some of us hope it's a little short. But there are things we can salvage. One is the concrete underneath the runways. I put those as an alternate in our bid. The other basically would be the shot put rings, tow boards. But the runways primarily and the slab of concrete, like that pole vault, that's a 21 by 22, that's a big area of concrete where the mat goes in the pit.
Oh, the mat.
Yeah. So what we're going to do is only what's necessary and that work basically is in our site work. And then we have site work and alternates. We're going to do a full thorough investigation. We believe the concrete can't be salvaged. We know the inside and outside curves can't.
What about the, what is it, the high jump area?
High jump area is going to need to come out. We're going to look at the underlying subbase and make a determination, but we won't make that determination. The surface needs to come out.
But is concrete that?
Yeah, concrete should be good. Anything that's concrete should be good. We just want to take a look at it and the time to do that after the surface is removed. There's a lot of times in our industry where we're asked to make decisions when the surface comes off. We just had this at Putnam North. We took the surface off, you might see something a little different than when the surface is still there. So that's our intent, is to be a good steward of your money and make intelligent decisions that make sense. Guys, it's a lot of money.
So when the track is done, what's the expected life of the track before we?
Great question. If we select the 300 option, it's called the sandwich system, approximately 10 to 11 years, you won't need to do anything. And then after about year 10 or 11, we resurface over the top of it with a five-millimeter re-pore, resurface. Then you're going to get another 10 or 11 years out.
So it's not removed and now that it's just?
No. Once this is down, your subbase is good. Your subbase should be good for a good 30 years.
Do you pour this or does it roll out or?
Great question. It's paved, you guys. This black doesn't represent asphalt. I had the same sample that he did. In this instance, this is called a BSS 300, the first part of it is a black base, man, it's paved with a mechanical tandem lifter and SBR rubber binder is used. The top part is, it's granules, one to three millimeter that are broadcast. They put down quite a bit of them in uniform fashion and then you take up what doesn't stick with the tenant sweeper.
What makes it stick? You put it down with glue or?
Two-component polyurethane that our company manufactures back in Maryland. The other sample that you have, the BSS 1000, that is a higher-priced surface, a longer life cycle, 15 years initially until you need to resurface it, then you're going to get another 15, the same thing, a five-millimeter over pour right over it.
So what's the estimated cost of resurfacing once?
Sure. You're looking at, in your case, about $225,000 to resurface it.
How long was our shop last?
Two hundred and eighty-one. Did the same exact thing he's talking about, theirs lasted 13 years. It was a different company than it, but it was, yeah.
Yeah. These are high-end tracks, you guys. You don't want everybody, this full pore surface, what OU has, to give you an example, with the University of Tulsa, Catoosa, Ardmore, Cassin just got it. They're high-end. You'll notice a difference, more polyurethane and less rubber. Polyurethane costs more than rubber right now and always has. You've got to be real careful what's in your track, primarily polyurethane and rubber. Polyurethane gives you the resiliency. So your kids don't, athletes don't get shit as much as coming out. But you've got some nice options in there. The key in your case is in your subbase.
So the 1000, you said has a 15-year warranty or has a 15-year life?
A 10-year warranty.
A 10-year warranty.
Yeah, it's going to last on 15 years until you need to resurface it.
Right.
The life cycle on this is 30 years total. That's 22 years. But I try to break that into the bill because you need to go over it.
Do I understand the bid that the 1000 is approximately $80,000 more?
That's correct. It's exactly right.
For five more years? Is that what it is? Or eight more years of life?
Oh. Total, over the?
Over the total.
Yeah, over the 30 years.
Because you're looking at 22 for the 300 and 30 for the 1000.
Wouldn't say life cycle, I'd include tearing. Or you have to go back to your base.
Or you have to go back to your base.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
The key in this case is your base. It's getting the base right. Anybody could, a full pore, these higher-end tracks are somewhat difficult to install, but it's getting the base right is the key.
They need to be resurfaced because of weather conditions, wear, I mean, kids aren't going to wear that.
That's right. What, great question.
It's going to be?
UV rays, basically you go down about two or three millimeters. Things wear out when they're outside your depth. It's the same thing. Big example of respraying your depth, is it sealed or not? You want it looking good. Some of it's aesthetics, majority of it's for resiliency and redoing your lane lines as well. Sorry to be so long-winded here. This is an important.
We love it. No, you're good. You're good.
It's a?
Arm has nothing else to do this season.
So it is an important decision. And if there's any follow-up questions, if a decision is not made tonight, you let me know.
I have some things just to kind of clarify from Helles and then the quote sheet that I gave you. First of all, I know you're fine, okay, first of all, that hand, I gave you a handout that Mr. Lao's holding up. The reason is, is Helles was the first one to turn in a bid. When Bynon, Bynon turned in their bid and Helles just quoted the 300. When Bynon turned in their bid, they did the 300, but they did the alternate that we wanted to go to 1,000. Since they turned theirs in, I called Mr. Fisher and Helles and said, could you prepare me just in case the board does want to go up? So that is what that is. So you could add that $77,000 to Helles' bid. Does that make sense? Now, the difference is too, on this bid sheet that I gave you, basically the way that Helles did, they did a worst-case scenario and then showed a possible deduct of the $77,000 to give you 762. That deduct of that 77, that's those field event areas where Bynon did a base bid and they did the field event areas as an add-on. So if you were to take out the add-ons or the credits, whatever, then the base bid for Helles is at 762 and the base bid at Bynon is 795. Does that make sense where we come up with that? Because I think it's going to be a wash on the field event area. You know, I think most of that semen, they're all a little skeptical once they get in, did it settle enough that, you know, do we need to tear up concrete? But the concrete usually is a lot more stable than asphalt in those conditions. So?
If they did it right.
Yeah, if they did it right, yeah. So, but that's, I just wanted to clarify the base bid of that. So base bid is 762 to the 795. We would go ahead and encumber regardless, because you can see regardless if you do add-ons or deducts, it's a $40, it's a $900 difference, $840,000 being the total bid. So we would encumber $840,000 assuming we went to 300. So the next part I wanted to clarify too, on that alternate bid that Helles turned in, because the timing of it, they didn't quote the 1000 system, which is the equal bid at the end. They quoted what's a 3000 system, which is way off the chart. And so it's a little higher end of a track of the 3000. I mean, Mr. Regan could tell you more about it than I can. Covington Douglas just has it. I don't know that we'd ever need that much. I mean, you're talking Olympic-grade 3000s, right? So anyway.
Is that a 20-year service then as opposed to a 15?
I could call and ask, but I don't think it's any different on that. It's basically apples to apples, but it is, it does say 3000 on your sheet, so I just wanted to clarify. Okay? The 100 is, see, it starts at the 100 and that, we don't want that. 300 is probably going to be the most utilized for high schools that use, you know, for the amount of time that we use it. 1000 is going to be, like you said, going to be a lot more use, higher end, or do we want to pay the difference?
Is it proprietary blend that you use your own?
What happens is, it's not proprietary per se, but for sure that I quoted, and here again, I don't want to get hung up on all this, but I've got to bring it out. We have a, and I, we do that 1000 in two lifts. No other companies in North America or in the world do it in two lifts. And the reason for it, there's more polyurethane. What did I say earlier? Polyurethane costs more than rubber. There's a lot more polyurethane that's in it. When Helles does theirs, they do it in three lifts, they use more rubber, less polyurethane. So there's a reason why high-end track schools like Bynon, there's more polyurethane. Rubber's a commodity. Rubber shrinks over time. Polyurethane is what gives your athletes the resiliency. So there's a reason Bynon has these high-end tracks all over the United States and all over the world. We use more polyurethane. Polyurethane, athletes respond to resiliency. That BSS 1000, that's not the same surface Helles bid. They bid, theirs is in three layers, it has more rubber and less polyurethane. Jason, I'm not trying to throw a curveball. We do an ML as well to match Helles in these situations, but the numbers have, we've already gone over them all and we stand behind. This is what we want to go on. But different companies install them differently and it's the contents, content of their materials, right? You need to look at. If you've got 70% polyurethane, it's $1.65 a pound and you've got a company bidding 50% polyurethane and 50% rubber, they're using more rubber. Rubber's 45 cents a pound, you guys do the math. You've got 6,000 square yards here. It's going to be a little bit priced.
Do you know the contract?
So.
It was original 300.
Yes.
It was that.
This one, the?
I don't think, no, it was not Bynon.
I learned on cinder, can we give it?
And my shin splints still hurts.
I raised on cinder as well.
I get the feeling, I think, if I was the board, I'd want to know. I didn't know what happened on this track. Guys, it's like buying a new car. You drove it off the lot. 11 years isn't a long time in your track. And again, you can't go back and change history here, but I give Jason a lot of credit regardless of who you select for doing that geotech report. That tells us a lot. Not just the rock that's missing, but the base wasn't stabilized. And I don't know, I can ask you guys a question here without fracking. Guys, we did a track at Cherokee, it hasn't shown any cracking at all, but again, any of you gone over to the track? These tears are, it looks like a tsunami hit it. And it, I'm not talking about vandalism or something like that, it's just a very, very odd. The tears are very, they're just different than what I see in my job. So.
Even from the points of view of, after 20 years?
Are we sure it's clay underneath?
Yeah.
I mean, we have a whole lot of sand in this area and not as much clay.
You can't argue with the soil test.
I know the houses settle a lot, like my parents live just a lot too. Like the houses just settle. There's cracks in all the walls.
Yeah, I feel terrible for you. I mean, clay is all over this report and it's mentioned numerous times. But clay or no clay, the tears I see are, they're very concerning. So it is critical you get your subbase replaced.
What is, you know, as far as these materials that you presented to us, you know, between the 1000 and the 300, what are the differences in the movement of the material to prevent tears like you're talking about? In the case that this is due to our environment?
Well, one you're going to, you, great question.
Oh, you're just trying to, you're just trying to.
Brown is a doctor.
Yeah, leave that, leave that.
I have to be honest with you. I'd tell you that if they're cracking to that severely, I don't, they're both going to crack on the same level, you know, whether it be, because you're looking at the tensile strength of the surface. But the kind of cracking that I saw is, it's just different, you guys. I just haven't seen anything quite that violent. And it would indicate something is going on in the subbase. Your asphalt's cracking. And when that cracks, the track surface cracks with it. It's the width that cracks, it's the angle of cracks. It's just weird. So I would say both those surfaces should, they should hold up.
So this 1000 or the 3000 would be tearing as?
If the same.
If this surface was put on that track?
Yeah.
Same, same.
Yeah, it's going to mirror it exactly.
It's the surface.
Yeah, I mean, there's a failure, you guys, of your subbase. It failed.
The other question I have for you, Helles' bid, you do not have tearing out the curb. They do. So, and that's like $55,000 of linear feet of concrete. So is that concrete? Are you not going to break that getting in machines when you're 10 inches lower? How did your grader get out without tearing up the thin curb?
Probably get?
And if you guys do, since you bid that like that, if you tear out the curb, then you're responsible for the curb?
We're responsible for what's there now. So if something does, it goes back in that same fashion that it's there. So we're responsible, Jason.
And then the other thing that they had, I know you said you'd got a survey to make sure it was 400. They said they plant track radius monuments.
Different terminology for the?
Same thing?
Yeah. Tracky survey, siliger survey.
Okay, that's off the?
Yeah. So.
And does it have to go right back where it was at?
To keep the curbs.
No, the track. Does it need to go right back where it's at?
Yeah, you said the curb, the curb.
They're not tearing up the curves.
Oh, I know what you're saying. Different location?
They're not tearing up the curb, so yes.
Yeah, I'm just saying, rather than tearing it out, would it be just as beneficial to just build a new one someplace else?
I wouldn't think so, because then you're talking new dirt work to prep that area.
That's just a question, but yeah.
I would think so.
Because I don't know what it costs to tear one out.
Well, that's part of...
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we got, I mean, there are places that you can do it right beside them. You can figure it out, you can monetize it.
Yeah, additional dirt work would be...
It would still need to be demoed.
Yeah, it still needs to be demoed.
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
We appreciate everybody, you guys, your questions and feedback and everything.
Do you think we can put a stop to this with a sound base?
I do.
Put a stop to the tearing?
I do.
That's a concern of mine. It describes some obviously irreparable...
Two things, by stabilizing it, stabilizing the base, guys, we have eight inches of limestone or fly ash to stabilize it. Secondly, the six inches of rock. If that didn't work, it's a, it would be a first for me, and I've sold for 18 years in the state of Oklahoma. We just haven't seen this before to this extent, but those...
You mean the tracks in California?
Oh, yeah, all over, Stanford, I mean, tell me the school. We've done a lot.
Well, they have earthquakes out there.
I would say they have pretty big earthquakes.
Earthquakes didn't cost that. Cherokee's track would be what happened. Cherokee's with a fracking...
And I mean, they, in that area, even more earthquakes than we have here. Because I've got some production out there and I know. They would have reported, you know, if they, but with the proper subsurface.
Such a...
Concrete.
Wow. Mr. Sturberger, do you want to take more time to discuss these?
It's completely your call.
Well, I do know one thing, just looking at these samples, and I'm just speaking openly for discussion with the board.
Just mull it over for a month and we can, questions, if anything comes up, and then...
We can do that.
One thing I'd like to talk about at some point is, I know we've got to start with the track, and we're talking about a nice little investment here, but I'd also like to know what it's going to take to finish for the restrooms for this...
Facilities report on the superintendent's report, we'll have to talk about that.
Because I don't want to just do the track and let it set there by itself for another 10 years.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a recommendation? Do you have one particular way you'd like to go? Or you don't want to say?
Not tonight.
Okay.
I'd like to think about it and look over, because he brought up some things I'd like to be able to have other, and it'd be the same way if Mr. Fisher was here and he was, because I've worked with these guys for two months now.
Well, I'm glad to hear it.
I think that's fair.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
And we need to table.
I think we table it.
Or no action either one, yeah.
Well, do we want to talk about it again next month, or do we need to wait longer?
We just table it then, like you said, it's all, we can just move it to next month and we don't have to discuss it here as much. Any final questions that may come on?
Yeah, if you'd like to leave, that's quite all right. You won't offend us.
But the firm is going to start...
Do you want to take care of it?
Thank you, Ken.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we table, agenda item 4.3.
I would second that motion.
Dr. Matusik.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Hi.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes. Okay. Agenda item five, new business.
I have no new business to act on.
All right. Agenda item six, superintendent's report.
Okay, so tie in with the facilities and then kind of the S or P on both of these. Just start off real quick, we closed on the property that we purchased, we closed on that Friday. So here sometime soon, I'll be stopping by and visiting with the tenants there and kind of see if they have plans and, you know, have not reached out to them at all. So we'll start that process next week or so.
How is, you know, not, if we are the owners, we are the tenants, are we going to be the landlords now for the period of time?
As long as we allow them to be there, yes. You didn't tell me about that in the interview, but no. None of us knew.
You're the one that went bid on this property.
It'd be the easiest thing you've done all month.
Yeah. Softball, softball, so one of the things there, the dugout, the cinder block, everything, they're going to get started with that when he gets back. And so in two weeks, they're planning on starting there. So we've got the new dugouts, we've got four holes coming in that they'll have the net system, the entire backstop will be the net system, have a, you know, two-foot, three-foot little stem wall there. Going to pour pad, a concrete pad behind it, and then we'll move the bleachers to the home visitor side, and right now we're just going to do canopies for two sides and leave the middle open until we figure out next year or two years, the press box concession. Do we want to go up and match the ice for the baseball field? And then we could build a canopy around it, you know, so kind of look at the options because if we're going to stream games, you know, do we need to have a booth there? But that'll give us more time to prep for the future, but that'd get us to where we should have all of that in by spring.
So what's the possibility of doing something for an actual concession stand there in spring softball?
Yeah, besides what they have there, yeah, that's what we talked about, is figuring out something portable that you can bring in and, you know, with a used food truck that somebody has or, you know, find something that's covered and a little better than what they have this fall. Yes.
Are the bleachers, are they going to be, the concrete going to be poured underneath the bleachers, bolted down to the concrete?
Yes, yes, sir. The, let's see, track, okay, back to Mr. Lau. So once again, regardless of the track, what we, you know, what we decide to do, you know, the first thing we'll have to get is just a fence directly around the track and the entire, you know, being where it is, that way people, one, they'll take bicycles, motorbikes, cars, whatever it may be, and signage and all of the things to protect people from getting on, you know, our three-quarters of a million dollar investment. And then, then the discussion, and I've got an architect coming out, because there's two or three things. The one that I've heard is where Gary's office, where he offices now, the old bus barn that would be on the west side of the football field, converting that into restrooms, locker room, concession area to host the future track meets. Do you extend it out a little bit too? And so we'll talk to architect about that, talk to architect about the property that we just bought, that's eight, the area on the south, a building on the south is a shop, is 1,800 square feet. And so talk to the architect about putting that over for the softball girls for their locker room, get them going. And then you could design it to where you could add on a hidden cage for them. And then, what was the other? Oh, extending the north transportation barn, extending that maybe to the west or east or whatever's feasible, getting a couple more bays in there, and then putting a perimeter fence to secure that with having that much over there. So just some discussion items. But that's where it comes up with the S or funds too. I asked a couple of principals, you know, what do you want to look at? You know, as you hire more personnel, there's a need for offices, but it's kind of hard to build a certain direction. But we have, you know, we got 2.9 in the S or money, roughly 20%, or 600,000 has to go toward the loss of learning, the curriculum, you know, things like that that we will continue to purchase. So we would have, you know, close to 2.3 million that you could apply for some sort of construction loan that would allow you to spread kids out. You know, we tried it on the track, obviously didn't work out. The biggest need that I know Mr. Frango and Mr. Faulkner have is if there is a way that we could expand the cafeteria to the west. You'd lose some parking there, but with them keeping the same schedules, there's about a 10-minute overlap, and so I don't know if we need to change lines or, you know, that's what architecture is for, is to design and figure out something and then get a budget, come back to you and say, okay, here's a budget for this, is this something we even want to look at and apply for? Or, you know, once again, I haven't had a chance to work with you guys long enough to know what other discussion or ideas do you have that would possibly fall in line with that creating of space for the kids that we could look at.
The use of our old gym, is that...
It cannot be anything athletic-related for the use of construction funds, so...
Well, I'm saying for the old gym, if you expand cafeteria into there.
Yeah, that's a possibility, yes.
I mean, I know the Eagle event center, we, it was designed to spread the bleachers back and use the cords going both directions for practice purposes. Do those bleachers ever get pushed back? Do the temporary goals, I mean, I'm only in there for events, so I've not seen practices where they have four goals.
Well, it's, yes. I think they were in the summer.
Y'all summer, that's our...
All summer they were pushed back.
Okay. And I do know the volleyball, they had a tournament where they used both facilities, so, you know, I know that the...
Sure.
But you're just talking about expanding. We have that metal barn that is the wrestling room now, you know, is that area could be used for something as well.
Any other things to pursue on that? That I didn't mention, or ideas that you guys have discussed before that I'm aware of?
What about our ditch?
Yes, I, Ms. Tillman was out of the office today, so when she gets back, I'll see where she is, you know, working with that. And that's for the, if, I don't know if I, I think I sent everybody an email on that, the waterway on the east side of the whole campus, right there on the west side.
Maybe in your plans, but when we do that, we need to rip out sidewalks and everything going up to the middle school and elementary school. Concrete's popping on all that sidewalk.
Yeah.
I guess, I want you to know I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? I'm going all the way.
Yeah, as nice as you can.
Because that, well, that concrete, I mean, if you look at that concrete, it's got a lot of age on it.
Yeah.
Has it, have anything, do the trees there as well? Like, there's that large tree to the southwest corner.
Southwest there, and, you know, I doubt it has anything that, you know, as far as I don't see it buckling or anything like that. I'm talking about just the kind of surface. If you look at the surface of that concrete, all that concrete, the surface is just popping off.
Sidewalk right next to the school.
Sidewalk, yeah. To the middle school and to the elementary school. I guess, I don't want to put new concrete up to...
Unleveled, broken.
Yeah, to bad concrete and then go, we should have, you know, torn that out if we're already there.
Did you find any architectural renderings? Because I know when we were planning all the event center and everything else, the discussion, that was part of it because that added to the comp, to the parking areas that were required for an 1,800-seat arena. And I swear, I've, you know, when we, we've seen designs, Timely, I'm...
I don't know where they're, I'd have to look, but I know what you're talking about.
Where we've, where we were counting parking spaces that did not exist along Mitchell Road as well.
Talking about making like parking...
Yeah. Those gave me that civil engineer.
Yeah.
Bruggemann.
Yes.
Which architect are you visiting with?
LWPB, I've just, I've used them and...
Just make sure it's not the guy that was on this deal over here.
No, it's...
I have good relationships with LWPB and...
Rory Levers has been just a little one.
Anything else you need to explore on the facilities and just possible?
I'd say let's just get finished up with what we...
Well, with the track, you were mentioning fencing and things, I mean, yeah, the converting of the old bus barn, I think that's been a necessary thing for a long period of time, you know, for visitor locker room, hey, for a larger indoor facility, I've mentioned several times. But yeah, for concession area, something, you know, add-on for baseball, softball could have locker room facilities in there. Even if it's leveling the whole thing and starting new, you have plumbing, you have electricity to that building, and it is, whatever, 40 years old, so it might be...
Extend off and see if it can extend.
Well, you know, bulldozing the thing and starting a new, but that would be a great location for a multi-purpose...
Another dome?
No, we don't need that, but, but, you know, so...
Slap you blue.
You know, volleyball, I mean volleyball, softball doesn't have facilities, you know, locker facilities and track and field, cross-country and all those, kind of centralizing those into an indoor facility and it'd be something even large enough to do some indoor workouts or multi-sports, something to explore, in my opinion. But for the track, you know, if that's not used for restroom facilities, concession areas, we need to consider, you know, if we are to host a track meet, even a fifth and sixth grade, do we bring in, you know, a dozen porta potties?
That's what we have to do.
And then a scores booth, you know, that compiles all the...
Press box.
Yeah, the press box, the timed events, all that kind of thing. There needs to be something, maybe temporary, you know, but something more permanent. And I, have you looked at all that dirt that we've allowed piled up there? Are we planning on doing anything with all that dirt?
Well, that'd be the first step of possibly working with the city, you know, they talked about ensuring the cost. If we can provide dirt, maybe that'll help offset some of that.
And then plus, if we pursue that one ditch.
Ever when in between, like Arthur Woods had mentioned, in between FFA and just outside the track.
I'd like to have a two-year goal on that dirt pile to make it go bye-bye. Two-year goal.
Just takes money.
Two-year goal. I know, I'll get my skid steer, I'll start on it this weekend.